Home?
It's on my calendar.
So let's call the meeting. Thanks for the weekend up there. At the interest of time and energy, let's call the September meeting of the Narberth Planning Commission to work. Welcome back everyone to our lovely building. No, no, we're not playing it back.
I'm only glaring at your condition.
Pretend it's there.
I thought it was the air shut.
We are considering a meeting at 7:00 or 7:00 P.M. All planning commissioners are present. Adam, um, online, we also have three members in public, our chairs as attendants, councilors, Kristen and Jim Spear, attendants. We have Jim Staub at my, which, um, what are we going to, Planning Commission? So tonight's agenda is, uh, we do have a few announcements, just sort of regrouping on a few things that are going on. Uh, we have two zoning tax amendments to consider, which have been sent to council for our consideration, by council to us for consideration, that have been advertised as both of our technical corrections to ordinances we worked on earlier this year, just popping things up, but there's as usual, more to it than that, and we'll point out when we get those agenda items. If we can stick it out, last topic will be discussion of future zoning revisions. If we can't stick it out, we'll take that after. But I would, uh, like to begin, um, with some introductions. We have a number of new faces here today, and so we all know each other. I just figured we'd say hello. And I'll start with our new borough manager, which is Mary.
Oh, hi. So being your technical person, it's not doing any great job, sorry. I am the new borough manager, joined the borough back in July, and now we're making it here, live here now in the borough.
Yeah, you just started the ride. Because of, um, we're going to use our outside voice.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is loud. My name is Kevin Mulery, new borough manager, uh, just moved to the borough also as of July. Um, I come to you from, uh, seven years of work in Minnesota, and before that, Wisconsin, where I am a native of a little place called Port Washington out there. Been, um, been in the profession for over, you know, for over 10 years now. It's an exciting new part of number.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Elijah Carr. And we were on the phone today chatting about stories about Wisconsin and the Superior, so it's all kind of interesting. Just say hello, are you? And we'll just go around and make sure, Ken and other folks who are.
I'm Kate Voits. Can I say anything else? I've been on the planning commission for many years since I was on Borough Council before that.
I'm Michael Galdini. I've been on the planning commission for this year. I'm the secretary.
I'm Jennifer Ziehan. I have been a member of the planning commission for, I guess, three or four years. I'm not really sure because like the pandemic and, so don't ask me how many years, but I'm also a member of the historical and architectural review board here at Narberth, and I do act in the past few days on to the environmental advisory council.
All right. Time to say I'm the chairman of the planning.
Dave Brower, uh, I've been on more years than I care to think of. In 2004, it was my start date.
I'm 18. I'm 18.
I speak first.
I'm Jim Parnell. I've been on the planning commission for 17 years, former chair during the development of the foreign base, I will have to say, and happy to still be kicking.
I'm Jennifer Ryanikens. This is my first year on the board, and I'm an alternate commissioner.
I'm Mike Nochwich. Chloe Moore has a meeting conflict tonight, so, um, I'm stepping in tonight, and I'm also here to introduce your new, new planner, Tim Stubb. Hello, Dave.
Uh, my name is Tim Stubb. I come from, uh, sorry, I come here via, or I come to Montgomery County via the Florida Keys, where I did transportation planning for a few years, along with getting a graduate degree from Rutgers in, uh, city and regional planning. So I'm looking forward to working in a community that's very similar to a lot of other places I've lived in terms of like closeness and density.
So, so Rutgers?
Yes.
Rutgers, Keys, Narberth?
Uh, Keys, Rutgers, then Narberth.
Okay.
So I do also have the announcements regarding the Commerce Walk and the Act of Transportation Planning.
Yeah, we'll get to that in a second. Okay. So, um, we're pleased, we're pleased to say that either Ken or Alan or someone from their staff will be with us on that news. So that's good in terms of helping through communication with council. Um, so we will move to announcements and updates, and I'd like to start with the Parks Master Plan.
Yes.
Do you update on that?
Uh, so we have a new body that you're aware of, the, um, Study Committee for New Parks Master Plan. Uh, we met for the first time last, uh, month, mainly just to organize and do the things that you do when you're setting up your body. We selected a chair, Rebecca Moore, um, she's from the Parks Board. We selected vice chair, which was me. Um, and we kind of like sketched, we went over, you know, open meetings, active things of that nature, and kind of sketched out, um, the process going forward. So right now, what we're going to be working on at our next meeting, which is next week, if anyone wants to attend, um, which is always going to be on the second Wednesday, I believe, of the month. Um, and so at our next meeting, we're going to be looking at the scope of work to be put forward, um, in terms of the consultants that will be brought in to help us draft the plan, do community outreach, um, things of that nature. Things that are going to be covered in the plan are four different, um, public spaces, uh, three of them are parks, one of them obviously is Narberth Park, um, one of them is Sabine Park, uh, one of them is the newly acquired Elmwood Park, uh, and the fourth one is actually the, going to be covering Town Square slash Station Circle. Um, and so that's the four areas that are supposed to be included in that document. Um, I know that there's been a lot of discussion in this audio, uh, Town Square slash Station Circle, so Wednesdays, clear them out. Next week is going to be the first one. I would encourage everyone to attend, um, who's interested. Um, Sabine Park also going to be included. Um, so that's kind of where we are. It's all very, um, preliminary. Like I said, we just kind of organized, we were given kind of like what the general, uh, what was going to be considered at that meeting, um, and we're going to be looking at scope of work for consultants at the next one, and then just initiating a whole process for that.
Um, what time is it?
The meetings are in the evening, uh, 7:00 P.M.
And will they be advertised on the borough website?
Yes. They're official meetings in the borough. I know this is so.
And do you make recommendations to council?
Um, we will be making recommendations on, uh, because I, I don't think we are the entity that puts forward, um, like the RFP for the consultants and things like that. I think we're making those recommendations to council as the body that's going to do that. Is my answer.
That is correct. You're understanding.
Okay.
All right.
Will we get up here?
Yeah, it'll be here, and you can also participate remotely. I have the participating room at the first meeting, uh, just now. Now, for all those situations.
All right. All right, well, thank you. And you'll keep this posted?
Yes.
Okay, and so we will pivot back, and, um, if you wouldn't mind updating us on the Active Transportation Plan, and if you're able to find anything about the proposed walkabout that we need to.
So the Active Transportation Plan, uh, we are meeting with the Steering Committee next Wednesday here at Narberth at, um, 9:00 A.M.
7:00 P.M. There's a meeting here, I heard, so it's good.
So a week from today, we'll be, we'll be meeting here, um, and this Steering Committee is made up of different, uh, groups or different, uh, different partners, and including Narberth, Lower Marion, um, local universities and colleges, uh, and city, like the folks at City Avenue, and several other groups. Um, and we're kind of setting up where they, where everybody wants to go with this. We're going to be providing, um, existing conditions, so demographics, uh, related to the combined, uh, Narberth, Lower Marion area, um, the different plans and inter, and ideas that, and policies that, uh, Lower Marion and Narberth have both put together over time, and the hope is to this, to create a cohesive transportation network, uh, between these two neighboring communities, so. Um, and then as for the lower, the, uh...
For you, uh, to back, is there a question about the Active Transportation Plan?
Except that involved?
Uh, they will be communicated with, um, at some level, at a level, but they, but it's primarily going to be driven by, um, the two municipalities, so.
Because I understand they have a new, a new, uh, plan for buses.
Yeah. That we, we have, we have taken that, we are taking, uh, their new bus plans into consideration of partners, so.
Um, and should you go ahead and ask, uh, personally, if I have any questions?
Yeah, do you speak to date for the walkaround?
Uh, yes, so that's going to be Tuesday, uh, September 19th at 8:30 A.M. Um, I believe we'll be meeting, we'll be leaving from here, and it'll go until around 1:00 P.M. At least, that's the time I have on my calendar, so.
All right, and that's with who?
Uh, that is with the Montgomery County Economic Development Group, so, um, Commerce Department, yes, so.
I guess that's something you're familiar with.
Yes, I'm a, been an active member of the community of wealth here, so, uh, we've built, uh, been part of the representation for the borough, um, in these meetings, um, much of which been conducted by staff. Mostly, the goal had been to build both existing connectivity and kind of identify opportunities that could be kind of run forward and, you know, in the life, so. Um, there has been some progress, and I think the group is ready to, you know, share some maps or things, so.
It's already clear here, I think the walkaround you talked about is about downtown, right?
Yeah, it's about downtown, so.
So it's something different, Ken, so, um...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, and it's my ass, I didn't think you'd know that. This is something, the planning commission is often, um, recommending whenever downtown zoning issues come up, that, uh, the borough look at different kinds of retail development strategies and marketing strategies, just, um, and one day Chloe Moore, our planner, recommended that, um, she invited someone from the county who's an expert in retail development in small downtowns, take the walkaround. Uh, and that's what that is. I know that's of interest to yours, and so, um, I don't, what I'd like to ask is if you two would be coordinating on that in terms of who's invited, who knows, and so we don't want to make it a thousand people, or, uh, it's mostly for us to kind of understand what, what resources and, um, the county has to offer, and in general, like what kinds of, uh, strategies they, you know, work with, so.
Looking forward to get some input.
Okay, and then I believe that is all the updates, unless anyone else has anything? Um, Dennis Montagna, Dennis is too dead. I asked Dennis to give a brief update on the H.A.R. Are you still alive with us, Dennis?
Oh, yes, I am still with you.
Okay, Dennis.
It's still pretty early in your meeting, so you haven't lost it yet. So, um, yes, uh, yeah, thanks, you, thanks, Todd, thanks for the invitation. Uh, and really, this is just, I mean, I know you have a busy schedule, and I just wanted to just throw out there, just to have the planning mission be informed of the fact of the, uh, the historic architectural review board, which I chair, uh, we, we're exploring, uh, and the issue of, uh, of placing additions on its historic buildings. As all of you know, historic preservation ordinance, um, has gone a long way towards stemming the tide of, of, of five right demolitions. So what we're beginning to see now, we've been in operation for about a year and a half, we're beginning to see is, uh, sort of rehabilitation of existing structures, which we, you know, we really want to encourage, uh, and a lot of that has to do with, uh, as part of these proposals, beginning to see it, uh, additions placed on historic buildings. Um, and what we've done just this past month is, uh, we've created a, a small advisory committee. Kevin Block from our, uh, our H.A.R. is going to be chairing that. I mean, we have, uh, two of our H.A.R. members also sit on the planning commission, both Jen and Jim. Uh, so what this, what the plan is to really kind of explore the issue of additions and try to, there, try to see, do we need, uh, we believe we need to have better guidance, we need, we believe we need to have better instructional material, so that, uh, the borough residents understand, uh, additions, how, who, how we look at them. At this point, uh, council had voted on and accepted the Secretary of Interior standards, which is a, a group of 10, uh, standards that basically all historic preservation springs from, uh, but in addition to those standards, which are pretty terse and pretty, pretty cryptic, um, it's really important, I think, to, to be developing, uh, guidance to really help people. The Lower Marion Township has just this past year, uh, published design guidelines. We've been looking at those, we're also looking at other ones as well, and that's what Kevin is going to be tasked for. But the other thing that I, this is where I think there may be a certain connection, a certain synergy with the planning commission, is to sort of explore whether or not, uh, we think there may need to be modifications or changes made to our historic preservation ordinance in order to sort of place emphasis on this, or sort of make it a little clearer within the ordinance itself. Uh, and I think there are, there are planning commission implications too, because of building scale, uh, building, uh, addition placements and all of that. So, uh, I would, I would imagine this to be a conversation that we would, we would be having with, with you all, uh, and so I'd like to, because I say we're just kicking this off, uh, but I wanted to alert you to it, it's something that I think that it would be really good to have us be in communication about.
Any questions? Dennis, we talked a little bit about this yesterday. One thing I didn't mention, but I will now, is, um, make, make sure you keep Kevin Walsh apprised of all this too, because he's the, he's the person who really has to look after these applications, you know, and so making sure, so as you're doing your work, make sure you keep Kevin.
Well, Kevin is a, Kevin is an official member of the H.A.R., so Kevin is very informed on the H.A.R. thing, perhaps more well informed than he would like to be in some cases, but anyway, yeah, no, we're, we're closely with, with Kevin at all, at all points.
All right. Thank you for setting these variables.
Well, thanks, thanks, thanks for the invitation to, to talk to you all tonight.
Okay. All right, and any other updates or announcements? Okay, well, thanks for that. Um, I think it's good to start the call with kind of a field view of the other activities going on in the borough, so I hope we can follow them as the year goes on following, when it's bringing you along. Um, let's move then to, um, uh, review and approval of the minutes from our July, uh, regular meeting. Um, they were circulated, but not until today, so I hope some of you will see that chance to look at them. Um, does anyone have any questions, comments, corrections?
I have a small correction. Um, on page three where I was quoted, um, and it probably was, and if you had it, I might have said, but what I meant was that it's not that I wanted to leave a horse from Outford Avenue to residents, but I thought you could replace that with large law.
Okay. Nice. Okay. Any other comments or corrections? Okay, did someone make a motion then to approve the minutes as submitted and as amended by me? If you hear longer, if anyone makes a motion.
So we haven't seen.
Okay, as of a second, uh...
I know, it's...
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving minutes as submitted with that amendment, uh, votes? Extension?
Tension.
Okay, the record showed that you're staying.
I was asleep, didn't read.
Sleep, sleep during the day or at the meeting?
Never.
As much as possible. All right.
I made the motion on that.
Uh, Dave. Okay, so let's move on to our agenda 32, zoning tax for the minutes. They follow on the zoning, um, amendments that were going hard earlier this year and throughout the summer, in which were, um, I believe approved ultimately by, by council, if I have this correct, I believe they're actually approved in July, after having been advertised in June. However, um, we flagged at the time a number of technical corrections to those zoning, uh, amendments that, um, we felt needed to be made to capture what the intent was, um, to make things more complicated, some of those, uh, changes were regarded as de minimis and therefore incorporated into the advertised version, because you can, you can make small changes like that even after a code has been advertised, um, but the solicitor identified some that were more substantive, some of which involved policy questions and therefore needed to be readvertised, and, uh, some of those were discussed in, um, July, and some were discussed in August, at some meetings. I know that I formally have a little bit of back and forth with the solicitor during that time, reviewing interim, uh, documents, and so, um, what we have now are for both of the ordinances, um, um, what was advertised, and the request is for us to make a final review and comment before council. Both of them can council nearly as they could act as that meeting later this month. Uh, we do have letters going in from MCPC about that. I tried to get in touch with Chloe at the end of the day. Um, I couldn't find in my files, um, letters that may have been submitted by MCPC on the original ordinances. Um, if you have those and can date them out, they may be useful to refer to. For some reasons, I didn't have it by email from my class, but we have MCPC's letters, and if you had a chance to look at those letters, you'll see that MCPC, um, add in their, uh, their sort of polite way, raise some questions about the ordinances and issues that may require further consideration. So, um, what I would like to do, ordinance by ordinance, is to ask two questions. One is, does the ordinance as advertised capture the technical corrections that we recommended? And I can, I listened to the council meetings today, whether or not I did, and I listened to the discussion, and I can report to you on what was kept and what was changed from my recommendations. Then what I'd like to do is look at the MCPC letter, the comments that were made, and ask if there are any, uh, more substantive comments that merit further consideration. So that's how I'd like to operate, so that might make it a little easier for our, for our consideration. So let's start, if that's okay with everyone, let's start with the dispersion of uses ordinance. And, uh, I believe here, uh, there are some, um, uh, simple, um, technical corrections. Among them are that we recommended, uh, that dispersion, and I, I've already emailed based on our meetings, this is basically from our notes and meetings, that we recommended dispersion should not take into account businesses located in the Lower Marion, you know, in the 5B, when regulated uses and disallowed uses, um, that, um, um, in the 5A, uses covered by these ordinance would not only be distanced from new uses, but also from existing uses. That was a terror of drafting a code, we asked for that change, and that we do not think the ordinance should take into account schools of Congress and Lower Marion, and there were reasons for that. Um, I believe, I believe that all of those, um, changes pervade, uh, I don't believe that this draft deviates in any way, um, from the recommendations that we gave, um, and therefore, um, from my own part, I would, I would, I would be comfortable recommending that we, um, acknowledge that the corrections, the technical corrections we made as we requested. That I'll turn it over, um, for discussion that anyone might have, or anything anyone else noted, just in regard to the technical corrections that we were doing. Is everyone satisfied with this for technical? Okay, now, I just want to be honest here. I read this letter from MCPC, and while you guys are trying as hard as you can to be supportive, I'm getting the sense from the side that you just don't think this is a good idea. Um, just be honest. And so what I'd like to ask is if one of you could sort of highlight key issues that you would urge us to reconsider before approving this ordinance.
All right, so as noted that we do support the goals of economic development in Narberth and...
And I'm going to have to ask you...
Enunciate?
To pretend that you're in front of...
We do support the goals of economic development in Narberth and a variety of businesses in the commercial district, and we encourage the pursuit of these goals. However, we encourage the borough to consider some of our, uh, concerns and suggestions, uh, regarding, uh, these ordinance. First and foremost, we want to kind of look at business regulation is, we asked really the question in, in, uh, Part A under zoning regulation. Um, are all these impacted businesses truly a, truly needing, truly something that needs to be dispersed and spread out? And is there any data that shows that these businesses are overrepresented within the borough, or any evidence that suggests that they are likely to become overrepresented in the future? We want to see what impacts regulations would have on the businesses, on the, on the, any partnership with the existing owners. So businesses exist within the municipality, and we, and municipalities and businesses will always interact, and does this create a potential friction between the two, um, in certain, uh, regulation? And one of the big things that we want to point out is that this could also create, um, oligopolies or monopolies in, for particular uses, um, especially on how you want to define some of these items, and it could create very isolating situations where it's the only, the only business in town because they found that right spot, that's right between the particular amount of feet along the route. And then some of the other things is, as you kind of note, as you noted that there are issues with the measurements, um, some, one thing to really wonder is, why was 350 feet chosen for one? Why is 1,000 feet chosen for the other? Um, like, what is, what are we basing these numbers around? Uh, the other item regarding the measurements is that one does it by door, and the other one does it by building footprint, which is, again, could create, um, could generate interesting building construction patterns to reflect, to, to match that required distances. Um, one of the things that we kind of noted was that some of these uses can overlap, so salons could also do nail and hair, um, but is, but what happens if a salon is only doing nails is, are they kind of supposed to be 350 feet apart if they're slightly different? And we, and also like a variety of shops provide haircuts and other hair services, such as coloring, styling, African hair braiding and more. Will hair-related services be considered the same type? Like, will someone that goes to a barber also be going to a place where a, a general haircut place or a salon place? And we kind of, and would it be in the municipality's best interest to kind of discern the differences between the two? So those were some of the bigger items, um, and the other items that we really recommend is kind of... And the other items that we really recommend is kind of pursuing the routes of business district management and business improvement district to kind of engage the downtown more and produce the desirable, basically the desirable land uses that the municipality wants, so.
I'd ask, I'd like to respond to some of those points. I'll let other planning commissioners respond. And what I'd like to hear from the planning commissioners, if any of those critiques, comments, questions merit reassessment. However, I think that most of these issues that you raised were assessed in the process of developments. I, I will say, the only evidence we have, you know, so like, what's the problem? Is what you're asking. The only evidence we have that is a concern from the council members who wrote this to our attention that they're maybe, uh, that because of the general weaknesses in certain kinds of retail leasing that there might be a, 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 um, access of one kind of business or another using space preventing other businesses from looking. These particular businesses were a concern because we don't feel they contribute to the kind of quality and character we would like to have on, let's just say, five A, on Havener for North Norbert. And so many of the questions you raise about multiple person hair services, hair effects and services, monopolies are, are, I think we address by limiting the proposal from the entire five A district just to Havener for that too and North Norbert that, which means these rules don't apply on Essex, on Forest, on Windsor. So there's plenty of opportunity, but you know, some streets would be restricted, but others will. I know, Michael, you spoke about that issue, right? I think we, we took that, we took that quite seriously. The distances were actually a fundamental exercise, which we mapped. We, we, we took a circle, you know, different dimensions, different diameters and placed them around to try and see which circles would have the most, what kind of impact based on where businesses are now and where you could theoretically locate them. So short of, you know, using, using AI or such thing, we, we, I think we looked, we were very, we were, we tried to be careful that at least two and possibly three of each type could open each, in each district, which I think satisfied us, particularly in the five A facility. So I think, I think that many of those issues we considered and if we miss the mark of them, could be reconsidered. I, I think we tried, I do think your, I noticed your comment about consistent standard. And I, I do see that we use building footprint in one and entrance in the other and maybe something that, I don't, from a legal point of view, that they don't have to be de minimis, but from a planning perspective, it's probably a pretty smart technical correction to make, but not, not one that I think in the long run would have a big bearing on the policy. So I kind of think we considered most of these things. I wonder if anyone in the planning commission would like to add to that or say, hey, there's some yellow flags there and I think we should listen. Any thoughts, other suggestions?
I have, I have a question. Might it be procedurally possible for this document from Chloe to be floated back to the council directly, the people who initiated it and started this all rolling? I, if I were on council, and I had to be in my bones about this subject, I think I'd be gratified to learn that one of my, I saw, as so seriously evaluated the whole topic. I think there are some good points here. I have not personally got passion about the subject, but I do see the proliferation of smoke shops to be a threat to quality of life every, not just in Norbert, not just in Lower Merion surrounding states. I saw them in Vermont recently and I was just, so people want to kill themselves. You know, I don't want to have it happen in my town. But I think you could raise some, some valid points and I'd like to see what the council members who take this can in our direction feel about this very professional thing.
Other reactions? I'd see lots of head nodding, but tell me what you think.
To me, it's, it's part of a much larger issue of, you know, what, what has happened the last few years in our downtown district and what's going to happen in the next few years, which is developing the two thirty half. As, as all of us know, we've lost our three anchor businesses in relatively short order in the downtown, our five and dime food store and hardware store. And there, and I hear it all the time, especially at home, the great, great concern about the commercial viability and future of the downtown and, and how we can ensure that, that it will be brought back to what it was was and what's going to happen at two thirty half for it. And I think this, this issue is, is part of that larger question and, and is reflective of some of the concerns that I think are very broad based in the community.
Do you, which part is reflected? Part about strictly circuses or the end of the letter which talks about other types of policies?
No, we restricted.
You think that reflects some of it?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Any other, over here, Ken?
I do not have the work in front of me, but I just wanted to sort of reiterate some of the discussion that you had in last meeting about this topic. I think it's imperative that we maintain competitive pricing among similar uses. We have to have at a minimum two of the same. We cannot have a regulation, it's, you have to have a queue issue to keep prices in check. I think Norbert's number one, at least top five issues this year is affordability. We have to keep affordability on radar and we have to keep affordability in check. Therefore, we need regulation. We came up with 300, 350 as a round number that worked to provide that as a minimum in private district. And it wasn't an exact science, but it was close enough.
Did you not forget anything?
You're not forgetting.
Any other comments?
This government work after all, like I said in my previous comments.
Let, let me go around then.
All right.
Okay. Either of you want to comment? It's nothing we need to add, but you have something.
No, I think, I, I won't repeat, you know, all the things. I, I had the same concerns that the planning, the Montgomery County Planning Commission outlined, so I'll just second that. You know, and so to the extent that I think if we can forward that document to them so that they can take that into consideration, that makes sense to me. I think it also makes sense in terms of like some of their recommendations in terms of actively trying to, having a proactive strategy to attract the types of businesses that we want to see, which is why I'm really excited that we're going to have the walkthrough with Economic Development Director. I hope a lot come of that. And maybe there's, there's something there to, to say that if we have, you know, at a future meeting, if we have a live agenda, maybe we bring in Ed Bridgeway to talk about if there are any, you know, issues that businesses bring to him related specifically to municipal interactions. Obviously, there's a lot of things that we don't control, but the extent that there are any issues that businesses that are seeking to deal with, with land use related issues or for other entities in the borough, other types of things. And, you know, I, I don't know if, if there's other things we can do via some sort of like overlay, like active overlay for North Norbert and Havener to be able, be able to, if there's anything we can do within that type of structure to create a proactive strategy to try to attract the specific types of businesses that we want to see, then maybe that's another thing to look at. I don't know what that would look like right now, but just kind of, I think that there are a number of different issues we could look at that are more of a, that I think are probably going to have a more beneficial effect towards the outcomes we want to see rather than, rather than this type of approach. But I do second the things that Jim was saying in terms of the uses that we already have identified as, you know, the regulated uses like smoke shops and adult related uses and, you know, wanting to ensure that we don't see a proliferation of the things that I think are truly more of the undesirable uses as opposed to the other things that we talked about, you know, the other category of kind of social services.
Um, I'm just, from a couple of comments I heard, I mean, we were talking about affordability, which I think is really important and property owners, visit, they own the buildings in the downtown, you know, the rents. How can the nice businesses if rents are so high and can there be some kind of entitlement or some kind of benefit to the property owners to provide a lower rent option, maybe as a give back? I, I don't know if there's some kind of trade or allowance that we made to them so that we could place, they could, that maybe can afford higher rents. You know, and the kind of businesses that we want, I mean, the reason we lost them makes, I think, and then their competitive market, I mean, there are different reasons and it'd be harder to start because they couldn't get the sales or the, they didn't get the foot traffic and the rents were high.
Jim, you want to do it?
Well, I'll pick up on what Mike was saying about the importance of getting some professional advice. This is a drum that several of us have beaten until the drumhead is practically fractured for a long time, but on the penultimate page of this document under Economic Development Office of, goes on something like the virtue of getting some advice. None of us knows what the hell we're talking about on this subject. We really don't. We have intuitions, we have gut feelings about it, but I think we're looking at a, at a socialist choice of building vacancies versus undesirable tenants. And we shouldn't be forced into that situation. We should be finding businesses of a, of a sort that enhance the community, not to just put beating hearts in the storefronts. That's not a good deal for us. That's not what Norbert wants. So I applied yellow highlight to this page and I think, I think therein lies the need of, of the Academy Planning Commission's assessment of this whole idea. It's not about 350 feet or 1,000 feet, it's about getting the right businesses and then the market will take care of the rest. We have a grocery store, if we have a hardware store, the world would be beating a path to their doors. But we don't have those anymore. We should get them. There's a need for them. Let's go get them.
Let the record show up, he was pointing to the economic development core.
So, so.
That's funny. So it sounds like the sense of the room is from a technical point of view, this amendment does capture the technical amendments we felt are necessary for the ordinance to work. And just to be clear to everyone, the bulk of this ordinance is already in place. These are just corrections to it. So I know if we send this to council, I think, I think probably Jim's advice was, look, here it is again, what we've been saying. And that maybe, the one thing I would suggest bear is consideration is, is the consistent standard in terms of how the distances are defined. I, I feel comfortable, and I want to make sure you all feel comfortable, that the work we did to hone this does reflect a sort of making the best of this approach in terms of things like allowing businesses to, by the constitution, by diversity within the type that you've talked about so much, Michael. It's not, it's not going to have a severe impact on the ability of businesses, just people have an impact on the amendment. I agree with you about that. And I would look for a motion to say we recommend that council approve this advertised ordinance with the amendments and that we strongly urge council to do comments that Montgomery Planning Commission, a, with, with a high to the end of permit options. Furthermore, we ask the solicitor to consider whether the ordinance can be amended to address point three, page three, about the way the standards are defined without having three A. Does that capture what we'd like to say? Okay. That's why we have this on tape. So I, if any, if everybody agrees, if someone could make that motion or just say, I support that motion, then I'll second.
Move like you said.
So second.
Second law.
Second, all in favor of that motion? Any opposed?
Is Adam in the meeting?
Yeah, Adam, are you with us? Adam, I see you're on Zoom.
I'm not, I, I will, yes, I will with this one. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Adam. I, I shouldn't have recognized you and asked you to comment, but you support this as well?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, we'll try, try to make sure we, we do the conversations. And, and let me extend our thanks to Montgomery County Planning Commission for its thorough review and comments and sort of staying, keeping an eye on the ball for things and hoping that Chloe and I really appreciate that. All right. So the next topic is the consideration of the ordinance with technical corrections for the green building, five A district, five B district, zoning definitions that's out of consistency. This is quite a lot to consider, actually. I will say that I spent a bit of time, more than I wanted to, kind of reviewing the drafts and say, well, listening to your council meeting, I was at the council meeting, but I had to listen to it again. And I, I think I can report that this ordinance reflects the corrections we suggested. It appears that there may be a couple of things in here that were more related to definitions. Maybe perhaps even one thing the solicitor added that I don't really discuss, which has to do with wireless transmission towers, except for one thing. There's one thing council declined to include and one thing actually they added that is a review. And so that has to do with solar panels, accessibility features of the heart. Council in this ordinance is proposing that the heart is reviewed, features related accessibility be reviewed. I don't, I don't know if this was a state advisory or a COA or COA review, but they decided they don't want the heart involved in those kinds of reviews. And we had proposed that, as you know, we spent a long time talking about solar panels and whether or not, but what we currently have now about, about solar panels needing to be parallel to the roof and within eight inches of the roof, how do we build in flexibility for the, for light or not? Build things that have a higher level of efficiency or position better. There are, we, we looked at many solutions over many months and we ultimately said, well, you know what, we'll make an exception. If somebody wants to do something different, they'll have to go to the heart and get it reviewed. That was our solution. The council did not agree with that. and get it reviewed. That was our solution. The council did not agree with that. They did not want to add that to this ordinance. So that is, that is not in there. So I think as Jim, and there was two reasons. One is some council members just don't like that idea. And others took us at our word and said, we would like to have the HARP thinking about this. And so they said, let's ask the HARP if they think about that. That's the HARP if they think that's a priority for their time to review solar panels. So I think we should hold up to that. And Jim, Jim, Dennis, if you're still with us, take that question into consideration at the HARP, whether you feel that's a priority for your time, because that was a question that was asked at council meetings. That will likely go. All right, maybe Adam had a meeting to say. So I believe that summarizes what we have. Can you, did I do anything else?
I think you covered it.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So on the face of it, as with the other ordinance, I would say, you know, I would recommend approving these changes as they are. I would include in that recommendation, making sure the HARP does consider the question of solar panels, and also ask the HARP to reengage with the question about lifts and other kinds of accessibility and that sort of features, and if the HARP thinks that's an important thing to review, that the HARP should make a case to council as to why that should be reviewed. I think that's the HARP's job, to advocate for its priorities.
Somebody has got to look at these things, otherwise we're just, we're just walking in back to them.
Okay, so what I refer, okay, let me let Jim finish in there. I'm sorry.
I said, somebody has got to review these kinds of things, otherwise they just become the proverbial crack that things fall for. If there's nobody with an aesthetic eye giving a, giving a look at some wacky structure on somebody's sloped roof, solar panel, then you might as well not even have any ordinance.
So that, in terms of solar panels, the status quo would be there. They can put one on as long as it is parallel to the roof.
Yeah, yeah.
Then nothing can change.
So council was okay with that?
I believe the solicitor's word is, it is.
Except for the exception that you just referred to.
Sorry, the exception?
What was the accessibility standards?
Yeah, I'm trying to define.
Yeah, because I remember reading it, and I remember reading that they didn't even want an advisory.
Yes, ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, that's not by.
It's number Y, letter Y, on page 13, chapter 32.
My understanding is they didn't want to hinder the ability for people to get the accessibility needs that they need by having to meet the protection required.
I don't think the other.
That's not the, that's not the issue though.
No, but I'm just expressing what my understanding was from the council. I'm not in a position either way of the issue.
The fact is, the ADA is a federal civil rights standard that will supersede anything that we do. But to be able to have some advisory role, so we can minimize the impact on front of a contributing asset to the district, that's why we wrote the ordinance. And it's absurd to think that, you know, our advisory role, the advisory role of the HARP can't be consistent with compliance with the NDO. And it is advisory. It's on advisory.
And, you know, it goes any property owner to, you know.
Well, my other understanding of it was that they added steps to the review.
It's a hardship.
No, obviously the review process through the HARP has to go through the HARP, then through the council. So it's a delayed process. I think that would be one of the elements of it.
That's not how advisory.
Yeah, advisory doesn't have to be.
It's just a meeting.
I get that, but I think there, I'm just explaining to you from my understanding of the council meeting. I'm not, I'm not laying forth the defense of what was said. I simply explained what I did. Whether or not that makes a lot of sense to you is for you to determine, and I mean, I'm not making an argument on that.
Because at the time, I'd like to suggest that, again, that we register objection to that, those approvals. But rightly place it for the HARP's hands to decide how important this priority is. And I think so HARP does, and that the HARP made a case making to council. We can make the objection. We recommended it, they rejected it, we can object. But I think clearly it should be the HARP should be making a case for this. The HARP should consider how this is relation to, I think, also depends on its place. Maybe the HARP has created a need to do.
Is there a responsibility in the ordinance to provide recommendations about the pluggability of their role and evaluation? So as well within the purview to make a recommendation.
So that said, Michael, we used forward it to me some technical corrections and questions about this today. I looked at all of those. I don't know that we need to give them through all of them, unless you would want to. You had one question about the county commission's recommendation for body weight on Havoc for that, maybe six feet. The ordinance is five feet. That's a council change. After a much debate, that was changed quite quickly. Impressed. I do have a target of respect on that versus the impact that will have on our society.
Otherwise, no mess.
All right, one foot here, one foot there. Next thing you know. Adam, excuse me, Michael, your, your comment about section IV was also reflected in County Planning Commission's letter about language, about what it were. Do you have, we can forward these additional technical corrections of the ordinance as well. I guess for that reason, we should read them out loud. Would you like to review them? Or do you want me to review them?
Yeah, I can run through them real quick. They were, so you already covered some of them. The other one, and I wasn't sure if maybe I was just didn't understand, because I wasn't here for much of the solar panel discussion. So I guess with solar panel, that's just the, is that the existing language? Or is that, is that a change? And what about the mounted at any angle?
Mounted at any angle would have been a change.
That's in the draft ordinance.
All right, so point that out.
So section IV.
I missed that.
Says, in the case of flat roofs, solar panels and solar water heating equipment shall not be mounted parallel to the roof more than six feet above the roof. And I think it says.
That was, that was a recommendation in here.
And the, that's in there.
Yeah, well, we did make a recommendation about that, because we also recognize that if the rule is you can only have it be parallel to the roof and four inches, that doesn't work for people on a flat roof.
So the question I had specifically was the next part, where it says, and, or it says, or, may be mounted at any angle.
Right.
Provided that it's not visible from the street. And so I wasn't sure if the intent was that the six-foot limit is applicable to both of these. And I don't think it's written that way.
So it's an indoor question?
Well, I think it's a, yeah, I mean, yes. In order to ensure that if the intent was that six foot is a limit, regardless of the angle, whether it's this or this, then I think it may need to be reworded slightly.
Okay. That is exactly the kind of matter we should be discussing. So does everyone understand?
Yeah.
The, if you have the paperwork in front of you in section G.
What? Okay.
I suppose, if I ever fasten, I can call up on the screen, but it says, except for flat roofs. Close to disabled, there's a screen share. Who's the host?
No, I'm sorry.
And do you have access to screen share of these documents?
I does. How? I don't have them readily available. I can actually.
This is page three of the. Yeah, for what it's worth.
Sorry, I keep confusing.
This is section here, G, to be good, but it's still fresh. I'm going to hit that here, there. There we go. So it's that, section seven. Except for flat roofs.
Todd, it's just an awkward sentence.
Yes, except, it's an indoor question.
The sentence just needs to be rewritten, so it's clear.
But is the intent, Jim, that the, whether the panels are flat or whether they're at an angle that at six feet is above the roof?
Well, it says, in the case of flat roofs. So this, this sentence is trying to talk about the occasion.
Right. That's correct.
A sloped roof is taken, is dealt with at an elsewhere angle in the text.
Yes.
Should not be mounted parallel to the roof more than six feet above the roof, or may be mounted at any angle, provided that it is not visible from the street. That's an extremely difficult way of saying that you want it to not be visible from the street. And all you need to say, shall not be visible from the street, but by the way, you should also say what visible from the street means. Is that from lying flat on your back in the middle of the street? Does that mean pedestrian on the far sidewalk looking up at the roof of the house? That's what I think it should say. Should stipulate, because any lawyer, even a first year law student, you have the field data that's, that's the visible from the street. Doesn't mean anything.
So it's proposing it should be visible from the street and away, and that we have a more strictly divisible.
I'm not so sure that that's, that's a practical issue. I mean, if you want to have a greater clarity on that, that's fine, but do you ever think about it from the staff enforcement perspective? Can we figure out what that means? Yes. We see it from the sidewalk, we see it from the street. Ergo, it doesn't need requirements. I mean, in terms of the review plan review, that's where Kevin would have to weigh in on how he would see this, because, you know, when it comes in, you know, how are we able to necessarily determine on the plan set that it's not going to be visible from the street?
Well, but it already says that. It already says provided it's not visible from the street. So it didn't solve that problem and just introduced new problems.
No, I did that. What I'm, what I'm saying is that the phrase not visible from the street is not a technical challenge so much as it is, you know, from a plan review standpoint, you know, how does that look on paper? Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this section hasn't even come close to being an issue so far. I think it's fine as written. Most of the panels we see are like three, four, or five inches above the roof line. So we're never near eight, and we're certainly not near six feet. So I really don't think this is an issue.
Okay, so.
I mean, the only thing I wanted to raise was, I could, it may not be an issue, and it may be something that's completely out there, but I could read this to say that I can mount it at any angle, even if it's 10 feet in the air. And I didn't, and the only reason I flagged it was because I didn't think that was the intent. It's not my issue, so I, like, you know, I'm just kind of here on this, but I wanted to flag it from that perspective.
I could see how you could make that read. However, the interpretation still, the ordinance does grant the latitude to the zoning administrator to interpret it, so it's, you know, and his interpretation within reason based on terms of how ordinance is advised, I don't, I don't know if that's going to be a real practice issue.
It also grants allow to the applicants to turn, and that's where I'm coming.
I have, I, I'm not so certain about that. I mean, I think there's enough clarity in here to understand what it is trying to be achieved, but I can understand why you might want some more detail. There is no harm in having more detail. I'm just saying that in terms of the way it's written now, it seems adequate enough to enforce, and, you know, none of that enforceability questions were raised by the solicitor. So, but it's a fair point to ask.
So we're not going to have wordsmith today. So what I'd like to suggest is that in passing along our recommendation to be five, Jim, we say that our intent here is that for five roofs, the solar panels not be visible from the street, and that we would like to defer to Kevin and to the solicitor to develop workable language and methodologies to hold applicants to account for that. We're not going to figure that out.
For brighter definition of what the requirement should be within the intent, is that technical?
Yeah, I mean, they may find, Kevin and John working together might find better language than Kevin. And bias on that language isn't understanding how he's actually going to go out and do that, right? I don't think we need to solve for that today. I think we can let Kevin and John figure that out. We will say that our intent is for solar panels on flat roofs not to be visible from the street. And we like the, so the officer and the solicitor review this level, and amended is necessary to ensure that standards are clearly enforceable. That kind of brings our business to the top. Does that sound okay? So we can move on from that. Okay. Michael, I think your other comments are also flagged in the MCPC letter.
Well, so I wasn't sure, because there was one that we had talked about before, and I wasn't like, so we had talked about the 65-foot width provision, moving that from the zoning code and placing it in the south. And they, I guess, placed it in the SALDO, but it remains in the zoning code. But now there's a reference inserted into the zoning code that then references the SALDO, and that seems like a very complicated way, as opposed to just putting it in the SALDO in the first place. And the wording on that also wasn't particularly clear. You could read it to only apply to Windsor Avenue properties because of a separate section that was there before. So that was one of the other things I wanted to flag, because it kind of, like, I guess it does kind of what we asked, but in the most complicated way I could have imagined it. But then also even that language was not particularly clear. And that was in section IK, you know?
Yes. The second thing about Windsor Avenue is, is it's like a run-on sentence.
Right.
As I mentioned earlier, I was seventh grade grader teacher.
Not an AI.
But the other issue, excuse me, Michael, MCPCs like that, and they question whether or not that language was good enough and whether a avenue might actually have variance because of.
Because it's in the zoning. Because it's in the zoning.
Because of the interplay of language, so. Again, I don't, I think the second issue about does it apply to Windsor Avenue everywhere has to do with syntax. Should be fixed. And the issue about the cross referencing between the Saldo and the zoning code work? There's a trigger variance is, I think we just flagged that for the solicitor. And that's something that he needs to, that we would ask him to reconsider. Because, yeah, we're not, we're not being experts. I think we should talk. You want to talk about awkward sentences like re-review section one. I asked that question of family, it's very awkward, but we're not going to.
Yeah, that's a good.
That was concerted to be consistent with the Saldo, that's why it's there, so we actually, I think we should revisit that.
I think that was basically, that, that, that the other thing to discuss for the things that.
Little typo, it's like E. I have Michael's flagging for H, so we'll just pass.
We can fix those.
Exactly.
We can fix the little.
Yes, yes. Let me turn to M C P C. Thank you again. Thanks to plug for the review. I'd like to ask you to sort of flag things that we think still merit attention. And again, the, the, most of these codes are already in place. These are just technical corrections. You know, A, for example, lobby and entrances, that's kind of a, the width issue is kind of a do-over question. We've already hashed that out. I think the question about the depth of the lobby is something we, we talked about extensively. I think we concluded it. It turned out, I think you talked a lot about this, which maybe you can refresh our memory from there when we got through this. We agree with the wider storefronts, but council about, we went back and forth with council on that so many times, that's, that's where it is. Your design requirements is what we were just talking about with Michael, so that's worth referring to the solicitor. The B, the language one or more of the following, Michael reflected that. So that, that would be A. This is, this is referring to section B of this ordinance. It refers to the C1C, the partial sections shall be differentiated from each other by use of the following. And I think both of you were suggesting by use of one or more of the following. So we can recommend that, see if they can determine that's the minimus, right?
So the way it's worded is that it lists everything? And then at the end it's and/or the last item, which would indicate that all this entire list, one of which is out. Only, you only have to perform one, which is weird.
Yeah, so you would, you would argue it's a change in. It's within the ordinance already expressed in the descriptions.
It's no change in the intent, just makes it easier to read.
Let's see what else you have. New standard requirements. Setback, stepback. You know, I have to, I mean, I think clothing is sort of the keeper of our definitions. We did discuss stepback versus setbacks. So I think that we have agreed. Given that setback is in the definitions here, that setback is the term on stepback. So that could be probably something to refer on. Statute of appropriate and super creative hard with the wall stair materials visible from a public way is proposed in this revision. I think this is only applying to. Which section is this? This is the. Ah, this is B. So. So division of lay development. So this really applies only to mixed-use buildings to the front and side width that exceeds 65 feet. This is part of that provision in the Saldo for, that allows kind of our leaf valve for people who want to create a building that is more than the 65 foot max from the law of the zoning code. You've rightly pointed out that maybe an interplay that goes to needs to be fixed, but this thing about the COA only applies to buildings that are more than 65 feet. Now, your question is, this is intended for new construction that require a COA for definitions now. Requires, it's intended to include any new construction that's 65 feet. Whether it's part included in chapter 315. It is a new authority for the part. Whether it is here or in section 315, I guess. It's more of a code rating question, so we can refer that to the setbacks, stepbacks, if you know what it is.
Just comment on the setbacks and stepbacks. See, in the zoning code, it does talk about setbacks in relation to, a building being setback from the street, but stepbacks being a recessed upper story building under the permitted use section. If there's another section, it's not particularly.
Stepback defined in our definitions?
I don't think it is. I did a search of the code and I just see it here in this section.
So I see what you're saying is I read that. You're saying stepback is. This is Google, I spent hours.
I actually remember Chloe saying that there was reference somewhere else down in there.
Yeah.
That the resolve was consistent.
Yeah. It's a little hard to search for it because you write stepback to the hyphen or space, you know, and so forth, but I, I wrote it step spaced back and I got the 500 depths, 301 permitted uses section, standards for use. And that's sort of a perfect though with the different uses. You know, one term drawing to the setup of the story, stepback, and one drawing to the the building being setback from the street, setback.
Well, the definition was.
That's right. Something to add in the future.
It's one of those changes that will not require.
Adding a definition. Adding a definition.
Yeah.
I don't want to get off track at all, but we would come back to the lobby, right?
I don't think so.
Why, I've got some chat.
Yeah, okay. Just because while we're on the subject of technical definition, I think lobby requires some clarification in terms of the technical. But as to lobby and so that would guide our minimum hits and depth and all that.
We, we had a long, long conversation about the widths and had settled between six and eight feet to allow for accessibility code. And we requested a recommendation for a depth because it's acknowledged that we cannot incorporate all the necessary components of a lobby such as mailboxes and elevator. We had requested that the solicitor, take a secondary look, whether or not it needed to be a definition of like how far into the first lot layer or if it needed to be at the second, but in most cases that's 30 feet, which is a really long six foot already. And then we were, we started deep diving into a conversation about whether or not it was the visible lobby and therefore things like elevator chases, a mechanical closet off of said lobby would not count because it would not be part of the visible storefront of the entrance. It started getting very convoluted for how to best define like what type of, so I, yeah, I do think that a definition of lobby or, or it needs to be vestibule, definition of how deep the vestibule needs to be before you can widen the space.
The only question here is how much of the street front do you want to, do you want to sacrifice to, to an apartment building lobby? It could be six feet deep. It could be, it could be any depth. It's a question of the, the amount of the facade that isn't available for storefronts on either side. Which is what we want to try to opt to maximize. So, you can see that there could be a vestibule to be a energy saving thing to have anyway, with six feet wide. Two sets of doors, two single, two single doors. They should swing out, of course. And then beyond that, who cares how wide they are? As long as they tunnel back to the elevators, serves its function. We don't care. The developer is going to want to minimize the loss of rentable commercial space footage, so he's going to make it efficient. Our thing.
Yeah, I think we're just struggling to define if lobby should encompass all of the components or if it was just the visible from the street and visible within the view segment.
Yeah, but maybe we shouldn't. Just deal with the facade. I think that's very good.
And we care for the nodder.
I, I think you won't get stuck in the weeds on a definition really. I mean, the focus is whether or not the developer, are you using the vestibule or lobby or whatever? I think your goal is the width of the street front. I think you achieve that unless you aren't looking to specify how they choose to lay out their lobby space, which I think may get a little onerous and complicated even on your end as well as the developer. I'm not certain you necessarily need a definition here. The developer might try to call it something else, but it's the main entrance to, you know, rental, you know, apartment building. We're going to call it one or the other. And we're not really going to get around either of those definitions. So I think you're fine. As long as you want to have that level.
I think there was, we just want to make sure we were covering the bases on mitigating requirements and providing a technical definition and a reasonable direction that would all gel together nicely.
Yeah, no, and it makes sense to consider something. Absolutely.
And unfortunately, Russ, we did, I don't know if we recommended six or eight. I think it was six. Council narrowed that. I think some people. I know, but. I think that happened after we recommended. I think some, that's another.
Four feet. They're going to have to show us how they can spend a wheelchair in four feet.
Yeah, I know, I know that, believe me, I know that.
And the update, which is in review process with the state, was six.
Yes.
I mean, we can, we can note again that we have jacked to this. But unfortunately, there were council members here at Adamant and others essentially gaped up in that conversation.
I think as a board or as a commission, it's important for us to, to track when the updates come out for ABA guidelines so that we can then make a recommendation for our vision based on the existing codes. And also in our recommendations, as we said, that's just the question. Correctional behind the number when I'm just pulling it.
That's a good.
Try to go through here to see what else is better. Catch a, it's a bad language, the generator section. I guess it's just sort of an edited copy, so I think that could be. This is on the top page four. I appreciate that there is a letter, but there's been cross referencing of the ordinance provisions, so we have to like search for, for all the most. It's Q. Generator section, yeah. Q. Q5A2 is what they're suggesting in the language. It's coming about the language about renewable energy purchases. You require code that all uses of the property shall have power electricity from a third-party provider of 100% renewable energy. That is our language and M C P C recommends. Change that to occupiers to offset their electricity purchases, purchase renewable energy credits. I would defer to you, Jen, for your take on that change, or see this.
No, this is. I'm sorry to be vain, but we do.
Yeah. Renewable energy purchases, section Q of this ordinance. When provisions, the green building standards requires energy being acquired from 100% renewable energy provider. We suggest a minor wording change for party to allow occupiers to quote, offset their electricity purchases, they purchase of renewable energy credits. This is how many renewable electricity sites operate. So. You have a thought about that.
I don't see a reason not to.
But so how does this work? I mean, like, I know that I, I buy my electricity by buying on the day of power suspension. I look for companies that say they either, they, they purchase wind power or get offsets for it, right? That's what I do. And so that's, that's my only choice. You know, I don't, I get a provider. I don't get to, I don't get to offset my electricity purchases and purchase renewable energy credits. To me, that sounds like when I go on speed and if I plant a tree, would you like to pass even more so that we can like plant a tree and offset your carbon? I'm like, no thanks, I don't trust you.
Yeah, it sounds givicky, but I think this is something where Chloe, sidebar, and she can correct me if I'm wrong some other time, but she had mentioned that she had energy credits related that she could not sell back. I'm not making this right. I think it's something that gives me that experience that is it.
It sounds to me like what this relies is to buy your energy, A D C energy from a pure Western Union coal and then just like buy a credit.
No.
That's what, that's what it sounds like to me.
So, what are we talking about? The choice aggregate program?
No.
No.
No, what, what we, what we are saying is, as of today, for A D U's or green building bonus, you have to buy your energy from a renewable energy provider. When the Bureau establishes the choice program, then you have to participate in that.
Yep.
Until that happens, you have to buy it from a buyer who's, who's, and the assumption is they're identified on the, on the energy marketplace as a buyer, provides their energy sources.
You've raised a practical enforcement challenge to determine whether or not these providers are actually meeting the criteria or not. And it doesn't appear to be you know, much criteria for evaluating.
So the consumer only has the choice to go on the website and get a provider. So I think we all just sort of assume if a provider is a micro provider, I don't know, if it stays at 100% P A W, we just assume that's what they are. And they require a homeowner to be usual and so on. That corresponds.
Yeah, so it's part of the.
Yeah. It's only a matter of. It's only a matter of, is, how do we express what the consumer has to do? I don't know how you even, how do you, how would one offset your electricity purchases with the purchase of renewable energy credits? How would you do that? Is there marketing for that?
Well, in the industry there is. For example.
Say, yours says credits. I'm reading a document that says, this is show required electricity from a 100% renewable energy provider.
That's what we have, right? But MCPC is suggesting we change that to say you offset your electricity purchases with the purchase of renewable energy credits.
That's a question I don't think we know how to go with that.
Right. I mean, all I know is I can choose an energy provider. Some of them say I get all my energy from renewable sources.
Yeah.
And that's as good as it gets.
Yep. Industry, if you have smokestacks built and particulates in the atmosphere, you can, you can pay to get forgiveness for that.
Right.
And that's not what we're talking about.
That's not what we're talking about.
We're talking about ensuring that you are attempting to get energy from the wind and solar sources, let's say, renewable sources.
Right.
That's the best we can expect citizens to do.
Right. So I think we won't, at the moment, speak about it. I think anyone sees.
Okay.
I think we're covered because it's specific to residential. If we were covering the commercial applications, then there is the industrial.
I think we should, if we're going to require a mix use, I think we should, but I think to keep it simple. Now, two comments about bicycle parking. Interesting comment that says allowing nearby bike racks to count towards short-term like bicycle parking requirement is proposed to be eliminated. We proposed that because we wanted developers to provide bike parking. While we certainly support having more bike parking, we caution the Bureau, this will mean that every new store that opens and needs skid and zoning permit, will have to install a bicycle rack for short-term parking, even if the neighboring store has them as well. In certain areas, there are existing municipal bike parking, a lot of reductions in bicycle parking. We suggest some required bicycle parking may be appropriate in areas where adequate bicycle racks are located. I'm going to ask Mr. Spear, do you have any thoughts about this? I think you were involved in conversations.
What has changed though? I can't follow the changes.
Well, yeah, I know.
It's a beautiful idea.
I spent hours on this. I'm like, I have so many memories. I think the essence of this is, is currently the way the code that was adopted a little earlier this summer says that you can get a credit for bicycle, if you're required to provide short-term bicycle parking. You can get a credit for that if there is already bicycle parking nearby. There's some down the street, I don't need to do it. That's how it is right now. And the planning commission said, no, it shouldn't count. You should provide yourself. MCPC is saying, wait a minute. That means everyone's, like, everyone who opens a business is going to have to provide bike parking, even if there's bike parking right next door or across the street.
Right. Right. So there's two different kinds of bike parkers, the public.
This is just short-term, so that's for like the public.
This is not on-premises bike storage.
This is not the long-term.
Gee, I don't know if I have an opinion on that. I mean, ideally you want to assess how much is already provided on the street. It doesn't make sense to add more on top of what is needed on the street.
That's what Chloe was saying, Jen, but yeah.
Yeah. Kevin, do you have a thought on this? Is this, do you see this, like, every time someone applies to open a store now, have them put in bike racks? Is that a, is this your interpretation of things and do you see an issue arising?
No, unfortunately, we haven't had one that the parking has been required yet.
What is the threshold for being required to provide bikes? I was thinking about that. Do you know what that is?
Yeah, it's in the, I think it's in the Land Development where it's probably remember it's a chart.
And then table 14, or whatever it's called, bicycle parking standard. I'm not sure I'm looking right back. I've got something.
It couldn't be on the. It's in table 14 of this code. It's on here, the SALDO. I think the priceable standards are the recently revised.
Right.
SALDO.
I think it's in the SALDO.
Are you looking, Kevin?
Yes, I am.
This may also be solved by their second comment, right?
It's, it's going to be zoning.
Well, that would be a future change. Is this from? That is my turn.
I'm a form-based, so.
So you're going to have access to the SALDO? Yeah, cut it out. I'm not picking the SALDO right now. I'm trying to figure out.
I just checked, I just checked that at Johnson. I know he like, oh God, like two weeks ago, so I'll see if he responds.
It's not codified yet. It's in ordinance 1056.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It's not codified, so if you're looking at it on E code 360.
I got it.
It's ordinance 1056.
Under new laws.
Yeah, under new laws, you'll find it.
Perfect, I got it, thank you.
You'll find on page 15, section T, a new table 14, bicycle standards. We're right creating as follows. Retail.
I think if you have any questions on this, you may want to get out of this, but because Eric's the one who enforces and reviews applications for Land Development, not me.
And can you keep reading as you reveal?
Yeah, so let me start from the top of the table. It says residential, short-term bicycle parking, one per every six units. Long-term, the greater of one per unit or one per bedroom. For general office, professional office and personal service, one per 10,000 square feet floor area. That's for short-term. For long-term bicycle parking, one per 5,000 square feet floor area.
Excuse me, but this amendment is just for short-term, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what's it say for short-term or for stores?
For stores, one per 5,000 square feet floor area for short-term.
Sometimes one per store.
Yeah.
And that's a big store. Most stores are less than. Not how, unless.
Way less.
So I don't think this is going to have a practical. It's in the SALDO, so it could also be waived.
Restaurants, small restaurants, one per 2,000 square feet floor area.
On the other hand, if it's not going to be an issue, then allowing the nearby bike racks and towns also probably.
Our big recommendation is more towards that, the fee and lieu is what that would do is that would allow the municipality to then utilize that fee to produce essentially infrastructure revenue toward building public bike racks in the right of way. Rather than each bike rack, the individual be maintained by a shop. It'd be a part of the greater infrastructure.
Yeah, I tried so hard not to say this, but I'm going to say it. So this letter comes from Chloe, this is her recommendation, because she wrote the SALDO. And so why didn't she just put that in the SALDO when she wrote it? Not like she wrote the SALDO and said, you know what? You know what I'm saying?
So this was, this was something I brought up when we were discussing.
I'm just saying, you just wrote the SALDO. All right. On the merits, I think that's probably a future issue. Except probably on the banner here, but I, I don't think the Bureau goes into collecting fees and aggregating them likely. So I think it's one that would merit discussion at some other time. So that we can add to our list of possible future zoning.
I can see that in the current SALDO ordinance that was adopted, page 15T, for the long-term bicycle parking spaces for automotive and civic, it just says the number one. So there must have been some sort of typo. There's no content other than the number one in there. So the same, same goes in that table for bed and breakfast. It just says two or one, and maybe that's just a straight-up number. And if that's the case, then that makes sense, but I mean, it's still kind of confusing. So is it, it's just one spot period per use? I'm assuming that's what it is, that's how I interpreted now, but.
So that's the fix.
And there's one other thing just to be aware of. I, this ordinance reads that it's in zoning code. So the only reason why I think that matters is because if we do need to resolve that, we may want to resolve it closer in the near, because you won't be able to, you need a variance to change that.
Weird, I thought it was in the SALDO. What do you?
It was originally supposed to be in the SALDO. If you look at such a pass above the table, those say in chapter 500, which is the zoning code.
No, 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 it's in here to provide, it says.
The ordinance 1056, it's in section, it's in the 500.
Oh, you're right. It's specifically applying. At least in the summary explanation, it says it's for 5A. Sure that doesn't appear to be, it's intended to be.
So that's a question, why is some parking, bicycle parking, why is it the, the, the SALDO? So right now we're figuring out X. I think for the, so I think what we've established is where bicycle parking lives and whether there's even better solutions like a fee that, how do you take it off? Technical issues that have been identified by Ken Seltzman, this is about working, as we've done here for tonight's purposes, I think we also established that. As a practical matter, it doesn't really matter whether bicycle, if you get a credit for nearby bicycle parking or not, it's going to apply in so few circumstances, it's not likely to be a big deal. So I would say for tonight's purposes, let's just say this correction is okay, but this is a bunch of work that needs to be done. Somehow the bicycles are going to be compromised. It may continue to be work. So where they're looking to go and whether a new fee works, maybe. So, and we're not going to, it's not tonight's job to sort all that out. Unfortunately, though, like more problems to face. I think that goes through your whole letter. I have no way of trying to summarize what we've covered. Does anyone else like anything else? We can review your comments, we reviewed your comments. Is there anyone else who wants to make comments?
There was other, one other one that I forgot about. I only, it only stood out to me because I had to watch the video from the last meeting when I was doing the minutes. We had this whole discussion about if you're participating in the ADU bonus and you're building a new principal dwelling from scratch, is that principal dwelling prohibited from connecting to fossil fuels? I think what we said at that meeting was yes. That's not reflected in here. It's another thing where I'm just flagging it to make sure that our intent is captured. And I, you know, I. So that's, so that was what it was. And I don't think I would have remembered that had I not been reviewing the last meeting from the minutes.
That was your second meeting.
Huh.
That was your second meeting up today?
Yeah.
I have it here. All right. So actually, we just approved those, right? So.
Now they are in the official minutes.
We can refer to when those minutes say, right? Where are they in the minutes? Thank you. Where's that in the minutes, right? Green building requirements, renewable energy. Just make sure we read what we said and make sure it's reflected in this.
It's in the thing titled accessory dwelling unit renewable energy requirements. So I think that that previous version had stated that it had applied the requirement to both the principal dwelling in the ADU, which wasn't our intent, because then every principal dwelling, you know, then that would affect everything. So that's how we got into the discussion. Jennifer looked at the minutes from February 2023 and indicated that it looked like from those minutes, we had decided to apply it to. Now, what's, what happened?
It's like a murder.
No, it's not.
So I, I mean, it's, I don't know how many cases that's going to apply to, so if we don't feel like getting into it, we can just send it on its way. But if anyone feels strongly about it, I want them to just be aware of that.
Okay, so the recent, this code, which council is prepared to support, says that if you want to construct an ADU, most recent person in drafting this required to have it here. Wait, this is the draft, and so what does it say in the actual code that we, that was passed and that we're looking at?
What section are you looking for?
Part of that is accessory dwell. This is Q.
So that would be in the ordinance number that I gave you is 1056. It's in section R, page 13. Accessory dwellings, we may need to provide new section, provide green building bonus criteria and requirements for accessory dwellings as follows. And that's where it goes into, we have our A sub 1 utility, how that's a utility.
Neighbor subsidiary, repercussions in ADU should be with sector ICC. It's actually B1, all uses of the property shall acquire electricity from a third-party provider of 100% renewable energy. That's what it says now. So all uses of the property. Let's see how.
All right, did you say it's B1?
It's Q, section Q, five green building bonus standards. B for applications to construct accessory dwellings, following criteria, requirement shall be met for accessory dwelling for the principal dwelling.
I see, okay, yep.
All uses shall acquire electricity from a third-party.
It doesn't limit the restriction on having non-renewable resources still supplied in the house.
Sorry.
It doesn't, it's like the wording of it wouldn't restrict a new primary dwelling unit from having like natural gas, rock and, of rock.
Right, so what happened?
Which has been the conversation was whether or not if you're building. Which has been the conversation was whether or not if you're building a new primary and accessory dwelling unit should be language then restrict all non-renewable resources. And we went back and forth and the minutes from February had said everyone was in favor. And I think, I thought ultimately we decided to just hold off for now on implementing that across all new construction within the October visit.
Right.
And so we.
So we can't do it on all new construction.
Right.
And we can do it if you're creating an accessory dwelling. Um, but written up the language that's in this thing that council is prepared to move on. It's all users on the property shall acquire electricity from a third party provider.
Electricity, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't stipulate that you can't have other resources.
You can have a gas.
So you could have a gas open, a gas-powered P-track system, but your electric service would have to be, which I think is sufficient.
And this was brought up for discussion. Council, the council seemed more focused on addressing commercial use of natural gas resources than really residential use, at least from my recollection. That might have been an oversight, I don't know, but they seem to have been focused on the commercial use of, of natural gas. And it seems to be how it's reflected in here.
And we, we had a whole long conversation about like, like you can't restrict it to commercial properties because it's a necessary component of restaurants and other.
That's not an issue.
Right.
Well, I mean, they spoke about, uh, exactly, stuff like that. Uh, but then they would address that in later time, is what I recall from the discussion.
I think B1 is.
Exactly, that's fine.
I think B1 is for. So what it says is, they, I was just making out, if you acquire electricity for a product, but if you like have an existing building and it has, well, keep it real. We didn't want to keep having rent or if it, if it was.
It was more like all the people who's source of planning property.
Right.
And ultimately we decided to, I think everyone was in agreement that it was a good concept to incorporate but for a future conversation, we found this.
So the language.
So then it's, then it's fine.
Yeah. And I'll just.
So folks, I don't, I think that covers all the comments, right? What I don't know how to do is sort of review them all. All I, all I can say is, um, I think, I think Michael, I mean, if you can, I'll ask him back for the recording, locally it's working, the recording, it says recording.
I did press record.
Yeah, it says, it says recording, uh, in the notes, in framing this up. So, um, to sort of document where we've landed on all these points and then, um, translate that into a letter, which I should, so. I mean, all I can think of is saying that we will, we will, um, ask the secretary to provide a summary of all of our feedback on these topics, uh, that, that have been raised by various planning officials in the SEC and submit them to council.
I'm going to give 90%.
What's that?
I'm going to give 90, maybe 95% of the vote. There's always an extra year.
Yeah. Is that, would that be satisfactory to everyone? Because I don't think we can review them.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, and we can work together on that.
Yeah, I tried to take good notes because this, I don't know how the audience going to hear. And maybe it's just because I'm right next to it, I am having trouble hearing things. That's also why I've been yelling all night to make sure that you can hear me.
I have a question about, like, process.
Okay, good.
Um, I was just wondering, you know, what, what is EAC's role in, uh, making recommendations on some of these, some of this language that we discussed here? Um, I know, I mean, I just feel like there's such a lack of resource willing, ready, and willing to do the research and that kind of thing, not that we're not, but they just have a particular familiarity and expertise, and need to work on all the kinds of fun.
Wow, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, much of the architecture of this general, as you know, it's almost inspired by a letter that we're in checkup with, right? She sort of like clarified what we have, but this, I think she was summarizing against the meetings and, and I guess about the commission, the first of us, you've worked on this closely. Um, I think in a, in a perfect world, so because it's a zoning matter, we formally have a role in, um, you know, having a review and improvement. In a perfect world, if we have questions about this, we should be able to consult with the GAC to that, but I don't know if that would be that in real life.
Yeah, right, exactly. I mean, that is where I think maybe it's needed to develop the role as the EAC. Um, because I do feel like, you see, this is very task-oriented. If there is something on the table that needs to be, you know, that research to resolve, it gets not like community voice aggregation, it's by example. But I think there are other things, smaller, more, the minutia of administration and implementation that, you know, maybe it's, it's, we could expand and develop our working relationship.
The commission is always able to request other borough committees and groups for advice and direction, and there's certainly no harm in making that request. It certainly can draw some research, but in terms of, in your drafting legislation, what pace may allow kind of delay and, and you can certainly wait, get that feedback, act with that in mind. Certainly nothing holding you back from doing that, aside from maybe finding something. But even then, uh, ordinances can be amended. You guys could put together a recommendation for changes in amendments. You know, if you're worried about holding up progress on pieces of legislation that's needed more promptly. Whether or not it routines, particularly to the project you're trying to address that, whether that's a practical difficulty, you certainly can ask. I would encourage you. I mean, if there's something that fills out your area of expertise, asking an expert or a panel of specialists, it makes sense.
Like, where do we buy off some? Like, where do we buy off some?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's see if we can work on that. So I guess the, I guess kind of resolution of sort of the power is, uh, Michael, I mean, to kind of summarize our responses to these comments, including the council's comments on this, um, both, you know, our, our response to very small technical matters and our pre-statement on things like hobbies, what do I owe daily expenses for? Whatever it's worth for the record services. Um, so is there someone who would like to make a motion to just support that direction?
Yes.
Should we make that, so second?
Second.
I think so. All in favor of letting Michael be submit this to council, um, or to the draft system. Where do you vote, Mike? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You're, you're like, you're like Ron DeSantis in the public debate. Your name came up very like, you're like.
Thank you. No, it's not, thank you.
Fine. Okay, um, so what I'd like to do is, um, I think it's, it's higher. So, um, I would suggest we make a motion because there's no other really pressing business to, to table all of our.
Could I bring up something? I know there's been some discussion about concerns about, uh, project changes in terms of architectural changes of course of their project. And, uh, I know there may be some interest in possibly adopting some regulations that would help, uh, hold developers to be consistent to their architectural design. We certainly can do that. I want to say though is that the development that we may be concerned about is probably going to be applied soon. And so in terms of adopting an ordinance, in time for doing that is going to be on length. We do still have tools, though. You have, uh, conditions that you can set as part of a conditional use and review. And so I'll be here to help you find out a way to articulate those conditions so that you can maybe have a little bit more consistency in a future project. I just want to say that I don't think we're going to get an ordinance through any time to address anything like to that nature. That's where the planning commission wants to go. Again, I'm speaking only on from what I've heard from certain people. I don't know if that's where you guys want to go, um, but I just wanted to mention.
Well, conditional use is a tool.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't have, you're not going to be able to adopt an ordinance in time. It doesn't, you shouldn't undertake one by any means. It's, it's trying to reiterate, I think we're at the point where we're not really going to be able to implement in time, so you might as well develop an ordinance that you think is good and take the time to do it right, um, as far as you can. That's all I'm saying.
This project, like, how is it to.
We may be seeing an application come soon. So, uh, it's just going to have to apply to the existing code in what form it is. Um, so we'll just have to see how that plays, but you know, you still have tools. You just have to make, you know, strong findings in fact, make the next to the project and to the benefit of the communal, which is, we can figure that out.
I'll just, it's over.
I'm sorry.
I, I sent along that example.
Is this Adam?
Yes.
Hi, hey, um.
Yes, are you, what are you?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, sorry.
All right, just as a reminder, I sent that example of a large development, uh, project in, I think it was White Hall Township in, in the Lehigh Valley that had a number of conditions attached to the approval. Um, you know, and everything from how lighting would be done for a driving range to other types of issues related to the design of the project. So, uh, I just was offering that as an example of, uh, an agreement between the municipality as the developer to meet certain requirements in order to develop the project the way and with, with those conditional approvals.
There may be some unique circumstances that are probably different, though. Their ordinance might have specified requirements. We don't have architectural design standards. And because of that, we'll have to navigate slightly differently, but it's certainly a good example. And if they did have architectural design standards, it's an excellent example. You know, without criteria, we have to navigate very wisely and put forward really thoughtful justification to make that.
Like, um, I, I understand, but if I, but I'm not sure if I have the complete details in the sense that if they exist, if zoning is still two stories, is that accurate?
Uh, well, not, not exactly. The, the, the new green, uh, design standards open the opportunity to break from that, uh, requirement based on needing specific conditions.
I thought the intent was to do things like have setbacks and control amassing in order to get that higher density support.
Well, there's, yeah, you won't, I won't deny that there are conditions that need to be met in order to get the higher, uh, you know, the additional floor. That's certainly the case. I don't remember the exact details of what's in the ordinance, but I can say that ordinance did pass and it, it's, it's now a fact. So, you know, it is applicable to any application for whatever the content of it is. I have a front end. I know it's, I'm sorry.
One second. All right, so we can manage it. Thank you, everyone.